Good evening, Spencer. We're back. As you know, we have a lighter schedule in the summertime, but we're back for the August 15th regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise with me and make your pledge to the flag. And please remain standing at the end of the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just want to take a moment to recognize a fellow citizen who served this town in various capacities over the years. Since we last met, Ken Wheeler, who is one of Spencer's representatives on the School Committee for Bay Path, passed away of injuries in an accident. And I understood from reading his obituary that he had served the town and the school and the Spencer East Brookfield Regional School Committee as well. So please take a moment, remember him, and your prayers to his family. Thank you. Please be seated.
Mr. Chairman, Ken also served, I believe, on the Spencer Finance Committee.
He did.
And on the Spencer School Committee before, we had a K-12 region. So his service at the town goes back somewhere in the neighborhood of nearly 50 years, I would say.
Yeah.
A good man.
I didn't know him personally. I understand a real gentleman. I know of active in his parish as well, so.
And he would be proud to have me say that he gave the town yeoman service. Because that's a term he used a lot as a baby man. Going to miss Ken.
My limited time with Mr. Wheeler. When he was an advocate for something, he put a lot of effort into it, everything he had. As far as Bay Path, over at the Post, he was very active for many years. He will be missed.
Yes. Thank you for filling that in. We have first to approve the minutes of the business executive meeting of July 11th and the workshop of July 18th. Do we have any questions on those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Say again. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm going to abstain, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I was here for the July 11th. I will approve vote yea on the second.
Next item is citizen input. As you know, we have a citizen input at the end as well, but if someone would like to come forward now, give your name and address, please.
Kurt Knott, Chris Gill, Drive Spencer.
Welcome, Kurt.
I'm just going to ask the board if, when you start paving roads and scarifying roads, if you have the highway offered to residents of Spencer, first come, first served basis, whatever. Just have them dump it in one spot, no spreading.
You're referring to Millings?
Yeah. All the Millings.
Yes.
I talked to a contractor in Auburn, and he says Auburn owns all the roads, they own all the Millings. And all contractors dump at the town site wherever they have. But I'm just asking, in this case here, if you use the town trucks, if some person wants some Millings on the roads, if you use small sections to park your car or do something, they should have the opportunity to do it. They voted for the roads for $19 million. You ought to give them something back for that $19 million.
That's been a policy that we've had in the past. If you're familiar with, I think the last time it was done was when they redid Route 9.
It was.
Mass DOT did that project, originally from the Lester line this way. And those Millings were piled, reserved. And then after so much time, when they weren't being utilized, we used them down at the O'Gara Park and also at the back of the parking lot here at Town Hall. So, yeah, I expect that we would do the same and appreciate.
I just hope so because I know it's big to use them. Thank you.
Yeah, Kurt, I know in my role, we use them every year to try to fill the holes in them. I would expect, I hope, that they don't go outside of Town 3.
No, no, they wouldn't. I think another place, you know, obviously certain residents would do them, but we did use them, I think, at the soccer field, the Abbey Soccer Field. I think the soccer association approached us at one point and used them for there, too. So, yeah, absolutely they'll be used in town, whether by citizens, nonprofit groups, or associations, or ourselves on town-owned property, which it all stays in town in some format.
Well, what my thing was, Adam, if they can't load it off the milling machine, we've got six or seven trucks, so the guy can go dump it right away, come back and just follow the details, and if nobody wants them, take them to the kind of whatever. Give the people the opportunity to use them, sure. A lot of people said to me, "Right, Ken, I need those as well." It's a good thing to bring out.
I agree. It's a very good point.
We'll make sure that's, we'll make sure people know.
Get it done that way.
It's available and where.
Yep. Thank you.
Good point.
Thanks, Kurt.
Bill? Bill?
Gentlemen, let me first also echo your recognition of the service of Mr. Wheeler. I was honored to call him my friend and colleague for many years and know his dedication and passion to this community and, as Tony said, to whatever project he undertook. And let me put my suggestion in now that next time you look at listing someone in leadership hall, that he'd be at the top of your list. And note that that doesn't necessarily have to be limited to the annual town meeting. It says from time to time, so if you chose to do that at a special town meeting, that would be perfectly within the rules that the board established when they set up that recognition.
Here, here.
His name has already come up in that regard.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to the town administrator. I think I had asked you about this, and you were getting a list together of the dates and offices that.
Correct. So, when we've had these discussions, I emailed the town clerk and asked her for information so she'll go back through all the records that she has, in terms of annual reports, in terms of who the officers and what years. And then that information usually gets forward to Brenda, and then we compile it. And then, obviously, eventually, we'll go on a plaque or something sort. So I think it's a great suggestion. It's already in the works. As you suggested, we had a conversation about it, and I haven't seen Laura. She's been training and getting ready for the election, so.
Okay.
It's on her list of things to do, so I think if we can do it for the special town in the fall, that'd be great.
And in my capacity as moderator, I would highly recommend that. Secondly, switching hats for a moment, as a park commissioner, I was the commissioner who wrote the grant to the cultural council for the concert series. Our final concert was to be this past Sunday, but due to the predictions of rain as well as the extreme heat, that's been postponed till August 28th at 6:00 p.m. So I wanted to get that out and ask the administrator if that can be put on the town website, the new date. And we've had about 30 to 35 members of the public in several of the concerts. Like, that number stays steady, but the people rotate through. And we've had excellent response. The first concert was a gentleman called Rockin' Robin, back to the Happy Days type era. We've had Rank Time Five and gone into the history of how music came from New Orleans. We've had a jazz night. The last concert will be Dixielion Stop, and we had a more general band called Rhythm. If there's any member of the public or the board who hasn't specific suggestions, we will definitely reapply next year. We are able to have five concerts, and generally, looking at the other titles, they run seven to nine. We paid for one, the grant paid for four. They were able to get some in Lester, for example, a couple of the businesses sponsored specific concerts, so that we're finally on board with what all the other communities are doing as far as offering some free musical entertainment to our community. And we may even expand that to some movies down in Powder Mill over the summer. So we are making full use, and that meets one of the goals in the master plan and the open space plan, by the way. Let me put also the park commission request officially on record for some of those Millings to continue at both O'Gara Parking Lot and, we would ask Mr. Tyler to take a look up at the Bemis Road, the Bemis Park. There's some holes that could probably be patched up there with that material as well. And I know a lot of people visit Bemis Park, so I would put in our request on the record for those two items. I see on your agenda later on that you'll be hearing from Chief Darren on how we recognize first responders and public safety personnel. Let me express my thanks both as moderator and as park commissioner for all the support we've received from the police and fire and ambulance departments over the years. And we recognize fully and appreciate their efforts. And if you gentlemen want to do something as part of the pre-special town meeting ceremonies, I'm certainly willing to discuss that. And then I'll see you back under item eight as to the special town.
Mr. Chairman, in light of Chief Darren being here, I would recommend that a band you're looking to getting is Hot Pursuit, which of course is Chief Pervier's band. I believe Gary Suter, a former member of this board, is also in that band. And Chief, if they have me and want to come up and hear them, they're pretty good. Hot Pursuit.
So noted, Dr. Pervier.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Bill.
See you later. The next item under communications, as Bill alluded, we have the subject of a first responders' public safety recognition discussion. You recall, it was a few weeks ago, I guess in my exasperated state about trying to find something to do to recognize our policemen who are suffering from horrible events this summer. You know, I brought in some light bulbs, and it got me talking about, you know, what we can do on a sustained basis, just to keep the service of our policemen in the town's minds. You know, Chris suggested anything we do in the way of formal recognition ought to be extended, you know, to firefighters, first responders. And I think that's a great idea. So to that end, I asked Adam to talk to Chief Parsons about building on his pancake breakfast in October and enlarging that to recognize our police and emergency management personnel and rescue squad. And would you fill us in on that?
Yep. There's a great conversation also talking with Chief Darren about joining in that event. In addition, Charlie Connor had reached out to me from the Rescue Squad about partaking in that as well. I think they have partaken in some formats over the years, but in talking with Chief Darren, it's something we could formalize starting this year. And it'd be a great opportunity to share and gather all those forces together in the spirit of public safety recognition, so I look forward to a positive event.
As we reached out to the chief after that last meeting, Brenda and I both had communications with the chief. And the concern always is that, you know, after some terrible event, everybody's focused for a short time, and then it goes away, and you forget about it. And I guess it's just human nature that that happens. So if we can make it something, an annual event, and in the interim, you know, keep them in mind with lapel pins, with blue light bulbs. In fact, you see some of the board have on their police lapel pins tonight. I thought I had secured an outlet, a source for a large quantity of them, but they sent me a shipment, and it was the wrong, it was not the same as the first batch, so I've got to talk to them. But one way or another, we're doing our best to try and secure a reliable source for pins, either the American flag with the middle bar replaced with a light blue line, or the light blue flanked by two navy blue stripes. And one of those we'll be making available to the community. I've already talked with the American Legion about making light bulbs and lapel pins available at their evening hours, so I'm sure we'll find a couple of other outlets for them as well. So stay tuned, and we'll let you know where you can get them. But in the meantime, to be able to anticipate an annual event that recognizes and celebrates our first responders, I think is a great way of keeping it all in front of folks. Any more thoughts on that?
Great, great.
Okay, I'll keep you posted. Under new business, we have an action item for a one-day alcohol license for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, Rice-O-Rama Bike Show and Swap Meet on September 11th. We have folks from the Eagles. Can you give your names, please, and addresses?
I'm Dan Hayes. 132 Dennison Lane, Southbridge, Mass.
Wapla Doo, 46th and a half, Old Sturridge Road, Southbridge.
So you're working with the Eagles on this project?
Yeah, I'm trustee and the bar manager.
Okay.
And Dan's running the.
I'm the Rice-O-Rama.
Okay, gotcha. All right. And this is taking place at?
Spencer Fairgrounds, September 11th.
Okay.
We approved this last year, right? How was it last year?
It was okay. You know, the weather, they had predicted rough weather, so attendance was down. It was a quiet day. It was, you know, not what we had hoped, but the weather's going to be great this year.
Oh, great. The only thing I can suggest from experience with working with that facility is, you know, to fill it, you got to advertise and.
Oh, yeah.
Get the word out.
Yeah.
Do it every possible, you know, channel you can.
We've had some large events when the weather was good, but when, you know, when it's predicted to be bad weather, it slows it down a little.
Great.
Yeah, and our secretary, Barbara, sent all the necessary paperwork to Brenda, so I think that's all squared away.
Squared away. Chief is good with it, or all set? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I'm ignorant, I apologize. Rice-O-Rama, what does that stand for?
It's a vintage and custom Japanese motorcycle show.
Oh, rice burners.
The.
Now I know.
Come on, Ralph, you're a motorhead.
The show itself has trophies geared towards the antique Japanese motorcycle.
Okay, great.
Most of the trophies are for the Japanese classes.
Sure.
A lot of different trophies, but they're almost all for Japanese motorcycles.
Thank you. Thanks.
So what are some of the events? You do like swaps up there, or?
We have, yeah, the show and the swap. The vendors will be coming in on Saturday, not all of them, but, you know, we let vendors in on Saturday. And then some more will come on Sunday morning, but on Sunday is the day where spectators come, and they show up, and they, and most of the show bikes show up on Sunday, too, for the show. We do the show in the cow barn, which is great. The guys with the fancy bikes, they like that, you know, in case the weather gets bad.
Yes.
And it's over by, you know, by 5:30 or so, the place is empty, except for me cleaning up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I feel like you got to handle on the alcohol, managing the alcohol.
Sure. Yeah, well, what we do is, before anybody can, well, this is what they do, it's not me, but last year, they checked the IDs and issued wristbands for people who are old enough, so that way, if you don't have a wristband, you can't get any alcohol. Everybody gets ID, even people that look like me.
Yeah, we card everyone because you never know, you know?
Yep.
We check the IDs really good, because a lot of fake IDs, so we make sure we check it all good.
Great.
Sorry, you saw my question.
Oh, there you go.
With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
You guys are awesome.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Good luck to have sunshine that day.
All right, thank you very much. It's going to be beautiful.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, the next item is something that I'd never seen on the agenda before, which my colleagues have done.
Oh, yeah, well, you said you, this one.
This is to schedule location and marking of town boundary markers in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 42, Section 2. Adam, can you?
Yeah, I note that doesn't say anything about the town administrator going out there. At least two selectmen, every five years, shall go out and inspect and locate the markings or the town boundary markers on behalf of the town. So we're not, you know, John and I had this conversation, we're not talking about the bounds that you see, Worcester County Highway bounds that you see on the side.
That's what I thought it was.
If you go.
You guys, these two gentlemen have been through it before, so.
And trust me, it's a lot of work.
They can explain better than I can.
I guess, thank God, I was unemployed when I did this because it took a long time.
The whole day.
Tony and I, actually, there's one at the end of your street.
That was easy.
And that was easy to find, but it's one out of Paxton, up in the middle of the farm field.
There's one buried, buried. We had to find buried markers of Lester. In Lester, by the.
Was it by Musso?
Yeah, by the, I think, by the time you got, we went in one area, by the time we got to the marker, it was close to the camp. It was unbelievable. The North Brookfield one was.
That was way out there. At the O-Cam line, it was O-Cam, North Brookfield, and Spencer, right at the point up on the hill.
So we would gather any information that Laura has in her records. Laura's the keeper of the records, the town clerk. Any records they have on these markings. And then you could have a guided tour with selectmen that have been through before. But only, technically, only two have to do it, but the key here is that you just need to schedule a date to do it.
And then you notify the other towns of that date.
Yeah, Lester, we all did it at the same time. So we met, back in the 1700s, I guess, they met and shook hands at the markers, saying, "Oh, yes, we agree on the boundaries. We won't invade."
It is a lovely day out.
Listen, there's a lot of woods out.
Oh, yeah, there was mosquito invasion. Whoever goes, where.
Log.
So Tony, were you guys accompanied by anyone? You just went out by yourselves?
Well, did we GPS some of this stuff?
Some of it we did. Steve Tyler.
Steve Tyler went with us. Okay. So I would suggest we get back with Steve to see what he has from the last happy weekend we spent doing this.
So I'll start an email chain. I'll talk to Steve, what information he has, if he has a GPS, and it's obviously, he's done it before. It'd be a great way to do it. And then from there, schedule a date that at least two of you can go. And then from there, once we finalize that, at least two selectmen and Steve can attend. And then from there, we'll notify the other towns and work with them to get someone out there, get it done.
Has we done before the end of the year?
It just says every five years. It doesn't say, you know.
Doesn't say.
You have to do it by October 34th, or else. You know what I mean? It's something by statute that we do.
If we dressed in colonial garb, then we'd get some good photos.
You'll enjoy it.
Bugs today, and mosquito nets.
We had that.
Yeah, we met a selector from a town of beyond named in a mosquito outfit. You're in the woods, and you see someone come at you with that outfit on, you were quite surprising.
All right, so we'll get that in motion.
I'll start the scheduling of the event.
Okay.
Put it in motion.
All right. Just, I thought you've seen it all. All right. Okay, under old business, we are going to be returning to our local community addiction advisory committee charge, adoption of the policy for our local community opioid addiction. And the chief is back. It was presented back in July, so with our summer schedule, this is the first chance. We gave ourselves a week to think about it, and then we gave ourselves a while to think about it. And now we're back to hopefully finally adopt it after, you've had a chance to read it over, if there are any things you want to return to with the chief. Any issues need to be clarified?
So I'll just summarize, just briefly introducing Chief Darren, who's up at the podium, if you will, at the table. But the chief had presented after doing research and studying the issue, and obviously, it's a common issue, not just affecting Spencer, but Central Mass, state of Massachusetts, and obviously at the federal level, and probably international. But the chief proposed a three-pronged approach, which involves education being one of the key components, utilizing the district attorney's task force and working with the school. Obviously, well, actually, there's two there. As part of that approach, utilizing the DA task force and also working with the local police department and the schools enforcement, which is obviously always ongoing, and maintaining, establishing those relationships at the state level and inter-town level. And then the third is the treatment recovery. So if you've done some reading, obviously, there's many news articles and documentaries and things going on, and one of the things that everyone's talked about is we need to do something above and beyond the enforcement level, and that is where the treatment recovery discussion comes in. So if you recall, back in July, the chief had members of a recovery nonprofit with some notable members, former officials, that are very intent on addressing the issue and working with our communities, and have discussed this program in Spencer, in which we would utilize community folks, community volunteers, getting them involved in the community effort to curtail addiction, and getting people the right information and the right path to recovery. So with that, David did provide some documentation on that. You also had a brief presentation from the 24/7 Help Task Force that was here. And then at the very end of your packet, you have the charge, a seven-member group, which involves four or five of the frontline folks, if you will, first responders, the superintendent of schools, and then also mentioning a member of the Board of Selectmen and a citizen-at-large to also be on that committee to work through this program that's been presented, coordinating a public forum to involve the presentation by the DA's office, coordinating multiple presentations by our local police department at the high school and junior high, coordinating the mentor advocate program that I briefly discussed. And then looking at any and all suitable strategies to inform the community of intervention, treatment, and recovery programs. And if, you know, obviously utilizing some of the things that we were talking about, what other things are coming out, other strategies that they could explore at that community level, at the committee level, and then recommend, and taking action to, you know, further curtail the crisis, if you will. So with that, Chief Darren is here. You can go through any of the information that you've been presented, if you want to talk about the, obviously, at the end goal is to vote and adopt a policy that was initially presented. And now we're back, based on our policy and policies, at a second business meeting to have that vote, hopefully to adopt that. And then later, you'll see I have under Board Liaison Reports, appointing a member of the Board of Selectmen to that, to serve on that committee with the first responders and others. So with that, Chief Darren is here, and welcome to answer any questions.
Nothing to add, folks, other than just we're adding the two positions to increase the committee to seven, with a selectman and a citizen-at-large to be appointed by the town administrator. So we get a larger representation of the community, and I think that's fine and well in keeping with what we're trying to do. Once this is, this part is completed, we've got some of the other pieces of the puzzle. I think you've seen some of the flyers from the district attorney's task force. That's all set and ready to go. There's going to be a resource table that are going to be manned by myself and Sergeant Befferd. That's going to be the first part of the task force meeting. We've got an officer that's going to be taking some training through the Mass Police Training Council on Addiction Issues, and that's basically the curriculum that we're going to be giving to the high school and the junior high school students. So that's well underway. The Help Task Force has pretty much finalized the training for the advocate mentors, which will take place in September. So hopefully, we'll have a cadre of folks that'll be available to start that part of the process, so we're moving along. So this is the next step.
I will say this, chief, is your policy based against Gloucesters, because I don't know if anybody's following this. I followed this very closely on where it's going and where it's at. And the one in Gloucesters has a little bit of trouble with the way it was set up, and I can tell you, your policy is a lot better laid out.
We're looking more at addressing those folks with addiction issues that have come to us seeking guidance as in opposed to making ourselves into a, where it's an either-or as far as enforcement or recovery goes. We're still, we're not giving up that side of the equation, the enforcement side of the equation. In turn, Central Mass decides to go. Dudley's doing a drug court scenario, and discretion is involved with arrested individuals as far as a diversion program with treatment and such. I believe that's where it belongs, not at our level. So that's a little bit as far as the general consensus. I think I agree with what Gloucester's doing, but I just think it needs to be done a little bit different.
Yeah, and I agree. As I read it, the district attorney is having a little bit of problem with it up there right now, where Early's office, from what I could gather, has policies laid out a little better.
That was one of the reasons why I think the Chiefs Association was holding back a little bit on getting an idea of what the best practices were going to be, because they.
And I think it would be.
We have a few, and I think this is going to be one of them.
It's going to be ongoing, but.
This is going to be one of them, yeah.
I agree.
You're referring to the article that was in the Sunday paper?
Yeah, but as you know, John, I don't, I.
You're good.
I know a lot of people.
Yes, I understand.
And I knew that was coming, but I just think that our plan is a more healthier plan, and I give it to those.
Thank you.
Just if I could add to that, that's, in some cases, not always best to be the first one to do something.
Exactly.
You know, so we want to be at the forefront, but maybe not try something that hasn't been tried, fall on your face. We've talked about this. So I know that we've, we did take our, I want to say, we took our time, we took diligent efforts over a period of time to try and bring the best possible scenario to give us the best chance at success in terms of whatever that success looks like.
But yes, there are issues that, in, in other towns that have gone out and came out and are, and are struggling. So we hope that we've taken a second hard look at that and then hopefully we can start off on the right foot.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make, has there already been, has there been any more talk about the presentation of the high school and making that a, a more on a, doing it more on a consistent basis rather than?
It's going to be, we really haven't, but it's going to be spread out. I know initially, to be able to get the whole, a whole particular grade, you're looking at several times throughout the year. So I'm, I'm not sure on the particulars on that. I think that'll be something more that can be investigated by the, the committee once they start meeting. And once we do a first round of classes with them, this, at the school, to see, hey, how often can we do this? How often should we do this? So we haven't gotten there yet, but I mean, I heard you the last time and, and I think it's important to, to drive it home.
Will you be coming back in a year or so to, to give us an update?
It'll be something that it'll, it'll be part of a regular report, I think, is, is once the committees start meeting, we'll have the minutes of the meeting because we'll be involved with them. So I think you'll be able to see what's going on. In other words, how many people are we contacting? What's, you know, how many students are involved in the class? It'll be something, I haven't planned the regular update, but I can see it being part of my regular report that I, that I do to you.
If I may, that's one of the reasons why you have a selectman on the committee, not only to have that connection relationship.
Yeah.
But as you see on the Board Liaison Reports and has been done from different gentlemen that have sat on different committees, whether it be the Party Building Committee or the Towns Land Solar Committee. That's one of the, the relationships that can come back. You gentlemen come back from a meeting and you can report or provide an update to the other board members as necessary.
Because we're going to be referring, when we look at individuals, because part of the, part of the role of the committee is going to be talking about visits that the mentor advocates have made. So they're all going to be referred to as, as numbers. So you're not going to know who you're talking about. You're going to know, you can be able to speak about them, but you'll be speaking about a number. So it's something that can be shared generally from the selectman that's a member of the committee. There won't be any confidential information that they'll have to filter out. They can report back to you, say, hey, listen, you know, what came about at this meeting? And then plus, there'll be minutes, obviously, of it to keep everybody informed. But, but yeah, it'll be something that, that, that we can routinely talk about whenever, whenever the opportunity comes up.
Okay, thank you.
No, it's, that's why I thought that there should be somebody from the.
It makes sense. It does make sense. Wasn't a deliberate oversight on my part.
I would just offer just a, just a personal note on this, even though I know it's not going yet, we, the, you, you appear to have selected a really good partner with the 24/7 group. And I can just personally testify to that because it was shortly after the, the, you made your presentation on, on, you know, on the, on the new committee, new community advisory committee, that someone approached me at a town event and said, I, you know, I have an urgent need now. I've got family, you know.
I was aware of that. They kept me informed of what they were doing.
Yeah.
And I was, I was, I was very pleased that they, they helped out.
They, they were. I mean, they jumped right out of it. Nobody stood on formalities and said, well, no, no, we're not, you know, we haven't started yet with you guys. It was like, it was, they're ready to help. And I was really quite moved by that. And she greatly, we greatly appreciated that, you know, that, her, reaching out to her and, you know, making some of those resources and pointing her in a direction and, and a need that's very urgent.
I'm not easily impressed that these folks impressed me right, right out of the, right out of the game. So I think it's going to be a positive, positive relationship.
Right. Very good. Any other?
No, thank you very much, chief.
Chief, commend you on your, your initial proposal. And the charge seems to be, be complete. And as with everything, we've got to be flexible as we go through this process. We see that something has to be changed. We've, we've done that in the past. We just can be flexible and, and go with it, so.
And it may be something too, just if I may add something, that we may, if this works like, like the, they spoke about when you, last time, as far as other issues, that we may tackle, try and tackle some other issues with this, whether it's mental health or whether other substance, other substances besides opioids. I, I can actually see, see going in that direction that if this works like I think it's going to work, we're going to be able to make that transition and recharge the committee when the time comes, bring that before you folks, once we feel we have a handle on, on what we're doing as far as the opioid abuse, that we can tackle some other issues and then maybe change the charge of the committee and proceed in that, that direction, which is something that I feel that, that's burdensome right now in law enforcement and something we need some help with.
Well, the, the concept of that individual champion or that family champion broadly applied to a host of.
Definitely.
Of social ills and where families need help. So I'm, I'm sure once you, you, I'm sure your own experience, once you get involved in a family, there's more, it's not just a single issue.
Exactly.
So, great. So we can undertake a motion to.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thanks.
And Chief is going to stay there.
Media one.
Going to stay there for a moment.
Sure.
We, although, at the workshop meeting, most recent workshop meeting, we, we thought we had adopted the social media policy, but I was reminded when Adam got back that it's not something you can do in a regular meeting according to the rules and policies. So now we will, in a regular meeting, adopt the, the police department's social media policy. We, there was no discussion at that time or any other, any issues come up in the meantime?
This is similar to the fire departments, which we already approved. And that's responsible, I think it's responsible. Take care of it.
Okay. Want to approve?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Pull your head off. I mean, it's, you know, I don't like getting surprised and reading articles about, you know, the explosion of opioids and, and, and the use of drugs in towns. But you read about those, we also don't get commended enough when we have some successes. So on July 26th, you, you guys, around that date, you guys had a major heroin raid or bust. So I'd like to commend you on that and.
Thank you.
Great job.
Takes, there's a lot of work involved in it, but that was, that was a good one. That was a good one.
Way to go.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Tony.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now, we are returning to, you know, to take up an item which had consumed a lot of Gary's in, in my time last fall and into the spring, that is, the issue of Browning Pond and the access presently made available to, to sportsmen, the fish on the lake. And as, as you, as you may recall, and, and the minutes, Tony, what was that? Okay. The, the minutes, you know, bear out a, a meeting we, we had where Gary and I had tried to, brought together the, the scouts and the fishermen, trying to find a, find a balance there that would, that would address their concerns about, you know, security for the, of the, the youth and the campground. And at the same time, provide access, you know, to fishermen. And we have a gate now that allows some, some limited access. We've got to the point where there was a, you know, where a, a new policy was taking place, but, but the, but the sportsmen decided to back off on that. And, and so we took it as far as we could. In the meantime, you know, since Ralph came on the board, you know, he's, I've shared with him our, my emails and interesting reading. How Ralph?
Very much. I was really surprised to hear that according to the state, the fish can't be eaten because of the high mercury content.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That, that really surprised me. I, I did not hear that before. And, but I had two gentlemen in town approach me on a number of occasions. One of them, I've known since we were about 14 years old. He's a, he's a friend and asked me to look into it and, which I've been doing a lot of digging. And the reason I asked for this to be on the agenda is, I, I guess, I'd like a little more clarification on the issue of Great Pond status. And if that means that at some point, there has to be public access. I, I read what John said. I spoke into Senator Goby, who's dug into this herself quite a bit. And it, it appears as though every, every piece of shoreline around Browning Pond, all right, is owned by a private individual. There was some question when I started looking into this, if in fact, the town owned where the gate was. It doesn't appear to be it. I, I went down to the assessor's office the other day and they were nice enough to look it up. And it appears at least that that is, you know, Boy Scout property. The only question I had is, and maybe we'll have to get, ask Mr. Tyler, is I know the town, it was in your, one of your emails here, I know the town, towns in general own so many feet from the middle of the road to wherever that ends. So for example, the town owns part of my front yard and everybody's front yard in this town, I'm assuming. You know, unless you, your house is way back or whatever the case may be, like the person we spoke to a couple of months ago that was in here. So I guess my only questions are, can Mr. Tyler tell us if in fact, the town doesn't own that, that prop, that land, that, you know, where the gate is down to the shoreline? Secondly, is there anything in the law that says a Great Pond has to give access to outsiders? I'm only saying that because with the ocean, I know, I've, I've read over the years of, of people who build multimillion dollar homes and they don't want to share their beach with anybody else. But by law, you know, you can walk up to the high tide line in front of a $10 million, $20 million home and there's nothing the owners can do. So I guess two, two concerns. One is just how far in do we own? We being the town of Spencer. Mr. Tyler perhaps can, can answer. The second one is to write to the Attorney General and ask them if in fact, there is any law, any part of the law in terms of Great Pond and their interpretation that requires an access point somewhere. And if so, then we'll have to find out where does that access point come from? It appears as though the access point is on Boy Scout property. It's been there for many, many years. I don't know how long, but for many years. Long time ago, when I was fishing, I would go down and stand on the shoreline and fish, never thinking I was doing anything wrong, never thinking I was trespassing on anybody's property. But the Boy Scouts say, in fact, if you're there, you're on their property. And if it's posted no trespassing, it's no trespassing. I know they do allow fishermen to go in there if they, you know, do what they ask them to do, get quarried and register their boat and all that. I don't have a problem with that. But I, I'd like to really, Mr. Chairman, to be able to use a cliche and say, let's put this to bed once and for all. Let's, let's, you know, seal the deal here one way or the other, so that this doesn't keep coming up every, every year or two. So that's what I would like to do. I would like to write to the, I'll, I'll make a motion to ask Steve and Tyler to let us know who owns the land from the middle of Browning Pond Road to the shoreline. And if in fact, the shoreline is town property. The second part of that would be to write to Attorney General Healy and ask her if there's anything in the Great Pond regulations or interpretations that they would have made over the years that says there has to be an access point for the general public. That's my motion. It's, it's pretty simple. It shouldn't cost the town a lot of money. I know posted rates recently went up, but it shouldn't cost us a lot of money to do that. And hopefully, one way or the other, we can put this to rest.
Through the chair before we hold.
You need a second first.
Okay, well, I. Discussion?
You can hold it for a discussion.
Sure. Is there any question? Because when I went down there, there was still a question about the designation of a Great Pond. Has that been, do we have that designation?
Well, that, I don't think that's been settled. I know about the stone wall that is buried underneath the water, all right? But we don't know is, when was that, when was that stone wall built? Was it built before, after the pond was designated a Great Pond? I thought I read something in all the correspondence John gave me that indicated it may have been a Great Pond even before that wall was built. So if we want to tack that on, I, I don't know who answers that question.
I, I don't think that has been in dispute, you know, that its status is, is a Great Pond. The Boy Scouts were accepting of that.
There was no argument over that. It is twofold, just a discussion point, is that particular road is, is covered under Mass Highway, had nothing to do with the town, Spencer. Mass Highway records, when they dissolved it, I don't know when they did that, Don, you remember?
No.
Might have been nineties. I think McSherry was the last one on it in this town. Those records were not held onto. Nobody knows where they are. So the question is, is Mr. Tyler would have no idea.
But he could call someone who would know.
There is nobody, that is dissolved. So what we were able to find, and I'm just going to throw this back, is the fishing game, and I did verify this again a week ago, was sending a letter to the AG's office to try to get clarification. That's the way we left them when we left with John. Mass High, Worcester County Highway, it wasn't Mass Highway, it was Worcester County. And if you go up to the Ocam side, they rebounded that road to 50-foot width. The mark is, that was a choice of Ocam at, at the time. We never did that. They have a choice of either being 30 or 50 feet, I believe was, was what was going on. I have a problem sending the letter. I just think that, you know, and I can tell you, John and I put endless hours on it. Tony, you got involved at one point, you went to a meeting to where, including Ann Goby, including, I think, Chief, you were involved at one time as harbor master, that no, there was no clear definition. And as far as anybody was concerned, we hit a brick wall that it's actually owned by the Scouts. Thus, where we stopped is the town board saying, you know, where do we go next? And, and again, I don't have a problem sending the letter. I just think, you know, and duplicating what the fish did isn't going to hurt. But I'm trying to give you the history because we exhausted this all the way. Mike, I don't know if you were at the meeting at the fish that night. And we had a pretty good case going and we had a pretty good solution until push came to shove and then personalities played a different role.
Yeah, just one thing, in terms of Steve, and Steve is a professional engineer and he's a very smart guy, but he's not, one thing he's not is a title attorney.
Right.
So what Steve would do is he would go over any plans that we have available in his office, any copies of records, and see if there's any layout plans that are on record with the registry of deeds. And that's all he can do. He's not going to be able to go through titles and deeds and search in terms of ownership of records.
I want to ask him.
So I think it's, it's a fruitless effort to ask Steve to do that. I mean, the only, and I mentioned this to the board a long time, the only real way to determine who actually owns something is to hire a title examiner along with a property line, property surveyor, and have them actually undertake a real property line survey and a real title search to determine who owns what and where that delineation is.
We found.
That's the only way. I mean, I used to work in a, in a company, a private company that did that work. And I think, my opinion, is the only way you're going to be able to do it, and asking Steve to, to research a layout. He's just going to pull out a plan here. We have a copy of a 1956 record plan that was on file with the registry of deeds here a go, and it says this. But after that, nobody, it, it just shows dimensions. It doesn't say who owns what and where.
We, and you talked to Pat Hearn. I think he can tell you the gentleman's name. He was a retired Worcester County engineer. We actually went down with a transit, found boundary markers in people's yads to try to get a, a rough idea of where, where it would fall. And we went through that. Obviously, he's not, no longer works in Worcester County because it's dissolved. So, you know, there's no authority to do what we were doing, other than we were trying to get a good idea. So as far as Steve, it's a moot point to get him involved, just being honest.
And Ralph, you may have not gotten all, all of them, but I recall one of the trustees on, on, on the board at Treasure Valley said, your highway guy referring to Steve said it's, you know, gave the, the distance, I think it's 16 feet from the center and, and they, and they were relying on that. I think, I would, I would ask you, I think, Ralph, because the, the board stopped, we stopped where we did back in the spring because we didn't, we didn't think it was a good use of taxpayers' money, you know, to spend money on, on legal fees. Hey folks, we had a, a few minutes of technical difficulties, just to summarize what happened in, in the interim. The, the, Ralph modified his motion so that we are going to, to focus on establishing the access rights to a great pond. So Adam, the board voted to instruct Adam to take that up with the AG's office. And in, in our break, a member of the audience, Mike Toomey, offered, made an offer to, to forward us some, some, some detailed regs on, on the state's rules for accessing great ponds. So our motion stands, valid motion, but Adam is going to wait to, to send that along to the AG's office to take a look at those, at those regs. It may shed some new light on it, or it may make the, our discussion, the issue of access a moot point. So that's where we are. We'll, we'll move on to the next agenda item. And that would be the Town Administrator's Report, a Fall Special Town Meeting Update.
Just wanted to just briefly discuss our next big event, if you will, the next few months. We'll begin our planning for a Fall Special Town Meeting update. In essence, our town, if you could say, has, has two annual meetings, if you will, or, you know, two major events, two major town meetings. One in May, in which we adopt a budget, including adopting and approving assessments moving forward, so we can begin with a budget July 1st. And the fall gives us an opportunity to revisit that budget that was adopted because after our adoption of a budget in May, the state doesn't adopt their budget until July. So we'll get updated information from them. We'll have closeout numbers from our own previous fiscal year of 2016. In addition to that, this will be our first town meeting with our new moderator, Mr. Schamath, who's here at the table and anxious to speak and introduce himself to the, to the town, to the board in terms of what's up next for town meetings. So we look forward to working with Bill closely and Laura toward the town clerk's office as well. So you'll see in the next several agendas in September, October, November, we, as we lead up to the Fall Special Town Meeting, we'll see a lot more of updates, the drafting of a Special Town Meeting warrant. We typically don't set a date now based on the fact that there's some question in terms of the state, in terms of when they provide our information, such as closing out our books and in addition to that, approving our free cash. They've had major changes of the Department of Revenue the last year with the new administration coming in. And the free cash is now only given to you upon request, where it used to be an automatic. You close out, you make the request, they send it in. Not so anymore. So it's a little more difficult on our end to get those numbers approved. And we'll do our best to do that with, with the downsizing of the Department of Revenue. But as you know, with some of the town meetings in the past, we've had them as early as, early October and as late as December 5th, in terms of having a Fall Special Town Meeting. So sometime in that range, we will have a Fall Special Town Meeting, but a lot depends on our workings with the state and the closeout of our own records, so.
Mr. Chairman, could I recommend picking two or three potential dates, one of them late, late enough?
It's, it's all right. So I, I usually will do that, say the end of September, Bill, but I'll work with you. I mean, obviously not going to pick a date when, first thing I do is I check with the moderator and then I check with the Finance Committee as well in terms of, because.
Being new, I didn't know what to prove.
Yeah. I'm not going to pick a date where you're not there, so, so I have your contact with vision, Bill. But yeah, so, yeah, we, you know, it's going to be, it's, obviously, we usually have it on a Thursday.
Thursday night.
And we'll, we'll try and make sure and coordinate with you that it's a day that you can attend. We only need 14 days under statute to set a date for a special time meeting. We won't do it that close in time, so we have enough opportunity to get information out to the public.
My experience is that the town meeting moves quicker, the more information you get out to the public in advance.
Correct.
The more, more, and if you provide a form where they can come and ask their questions. And I know prior moderators have done that, and I want to do the same thing so that it can go as quickly as possible.
You got it. Perfect. That's the plan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. So yeah, we'll be in touch and again, look for future agendas with future items. The Finance Committee, same thing, usually this is a slow time of year. We'll take some downtime. And now we'll begin our, our regular meetings with the Finance Committee beginning in September as we work towards the Fall Special Town Meeting.
Adam, would you elaborate on that, that need to, to make a, a new request this year for, about free cash?
Correct. So free cash is always in the previous, in retained earnings with enterprise funds and obviously E and D with school departments. There's always been a formal process, a formal closeout by a, by a third party auditor. They would get that information. You'd make a formal request, special forms that would go to the Department of Revenue, not a special request, an annual request, if you will, so that you could not use your free cash or retained earnings until you had it certified.
Yeah, be certified by the state.
So now what they're doing is, two things is, one, a product of their downsizing staff due to retirements, there was a, a law that was adopted a couple of years ago in terms of early retirement. As part of that, a lot of the departments at the state level, including Department of Revenue, were, you know, their forces were lessened due to that, and they've not bring those staff levels back up. So as part of that, two things is, one is you have to make a special request to get your, your free cash certified. The second part of that is you do not have to have it certified in order to use it.
Right.
So however, obviously it's strongly encouraged, right? So, so we like to do things, certainly, and I like to do things in, in terms of before I go and buy a fire truck or, or fix the roof at the, you know, the highway department, we, we have those funds actually be certified. So we will, unless the board directs me, otherwise, we will go for a formal process of requesting that information and have it be certified. You know, they, in discussions we've had with Department of Revenue, they, they said you don't have to do it every year, but maybe do it every couple of years. Just based, so they don't, they just don't have the staff to take in 351 requests, so. But, but we're pretty good about it. We have a pretty good financial process in place and we'll continue to do that in preparation for the Fall Town Meeting, and it's worked for us the last several years, so. Especially when we take our free cash, you know, maybe if you're in a different town of Framingham and you're getting eight, 12 million dollars of free cash. And in, in our instance, we, we really, we utilize that money for our capital plan. And most importantly, we use it to balance the books and, and the spring in terms of balancing our snow and ice, because we always underfund snow and ice. And just because we don't have those resources, we'll typically underfund snow and ice and then balance that out. So having a, a true number is very important for the town of Spencer, so I expect that we'll go through that process.
Okay. Great. Next item, Board Liaison Reports, Worcester County Selectmen's Association Appointment. Adam, how do we handle this in pass?
Yep. So we have a form that's in your, in your packet and talks about, a little bit about the history of the Worcester County. Selectmen's Association, it was, it's been around for a while since 1920, but it's recently been revived in 2013 where membership is, is getting up to the 60 towns in Worcester County. So as this information came through my desk, I felt necessary to forward it to you. And if you would like to, as, as you do in other committees and other appointments, is maybe appoint someone who's willing to sit as the voting member on that Worcester County Selectmen's Association. A little bit of history background. So we haven't, you know, again, it's, it's only recently that it's been revived, so I don't have a lot of history, current history in terms of what your participation has been and what your votes have been. There really hasn't been any. So provides an opportunity for someone on this committee, this board, to basically get out and network with other boards of selectmen in a, in a formal fashion. They have dues and formal votes and things like that. So I felt it necessary to bring it before you to see if someone would like to, to serve that committee and get involved.
Did we have a person identified last year?
We did not.
Okay. I was trying to recall who was last year.
Couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. That doesn't mean I'm necessarily going to do this. How often do they meet?
I said quarterly? Yeah, quarterly.
And where do they meet? Is it at the same place? Do they move it around?
It rotates.
I think it rotates.
Rotates, you said?
Yeah. So four meetings per year. Member towns send one member of their board to, to partake in the meetings. Meetings and topics include local and state guests who address the organization with information and tools that municipal leaders can then use to better their towns, roundtable discussions, of course, food. So.
Who pays the $50?
If that would encourage. So the $50 would come out of the Board of Selectmen's budget.
I'll think about it.
You don't have to decide now.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure I want to do it. I've got, I've got a pretty heavy plate. I'm chairman of the School Building Needs Committee. I'm here. I teach as an adjunct professor at Worcester State University. I have a confirmation group that I work with at my church. My plate's getting a bit full, so I'm going to really have to think about it. Somebody else wants it, that's great. Gladly support them, Tony.
I'll go on buffet night.
Is it a buffet night?
Carry it on to the next meeting?
Sure, absolutely. Yep.
It does sound interesting, you know.
I can, two things, I, we have a workshop scheduled for the 22nd next week, which, or I could put the first business meeting in September, so.
Do the first one.
First business meeting in September, give you some time to think about it.
Okay.
I can reach out to Mr. Starzak from Webster, let him know that we are.
How old is that gentleman, Mr. Starzak? Do you know?
Never met him.
Well, I'm thinking his father, there was a William Starzak who was very active in Webster government when I taught in Webster in the 70s. And he served a couple of terms as state representative. So I'm wondering if that's his son or if he's 98 years old and still going.
We may give you an opportunity.
I have to think about how I phrase that question.
That's all right. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll take it up in September.
Yep.
It could be, though. You're right, Ralph.
With the approval of our Local Community Addiction Advisory Committee, we will need a representative from the Select Board to sit on that committee. Discussion, offers, nominations?
I would say, I'd be willing to take this one on. I've done a lot of homework so far, if the board doesn't mind.
Yeah, that's right. I was thinking, it was either going to be, my suggestion would be you or, or Chris, because Chris seems to be, you know, the senior area of interest, so, you know.
Do we need a vote? I nominate Mr. Gary Woodbury to serve on that committee, the Local Community Addiction Advisory Committee.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A lot of ayes comes from Chris.
Sounds good.
We have another opportunity for citizen input next. Thank you for that, Mike. Would you like to follow up? For those regs? What's that?
Would you like to follow up?
On the regs?
On just the implications.
One thing about Browning Pond that you have to keep in mind is that a lot of people use it for paddling, and that in turn feeds into the sports and the licenses. It feeds into the equipment purchases. I mean, if we go down to Clem's, you'll find a plethora of stuff that people can buy. You also have local retailers who are dealing with boats and a number of other things like that. That all comes into play. And when it comes to licensing, if you know that you can go fishing someplace and have access to a combination of species, then you will tend to buy a license. Otherwise, there's an erosion that's occurring in some of the sports right now. And one of the biggest things we want to do is take a look at our Spencer economic development, okay? I speak as a citizen and not as the chair. But what we're finding is that there's a movement right now with the Chickapi River Watershed Association for rebirth. In the process of doing that, we are looking at setting up a number of blue trails. Blue trails are access points to and from the water so people can tour and enjoy the outdoors. There's any number of different research pieces that are showing how having access to outdoors helps with depression, helps with any number of medical maladies. And it's what a lot of Japanese term as nature bathing, okay? Because of the aura. Browning Pond is one of the least amount of developed locations where you're going to hear a lot of noise going on around you. And that's one of the benefits to Browning Pond. Having access to that is extremely important for a number of areas besides just having the scouts take care of that for a couple of months during the year. The rest of the season, it is a, it's a treasure trove of Spencer and the other communities around it. It will get stocked if the gates are down. They will gladly stock it. It has the ability to do a tremendous amount of economical stimulation for the town. At the same time, I remind you that the Midstate Trail does go through that property, as well as the trail up to and including Simpson's Pebble. So you've got a number of different things to look at that from and what is being said and what's actually the facts.
Just to clarify, just, just because not everybody, I really didn't tell the complete story with Browning Pond access, you can get onto it right now with, with the gateway it's constructed, you know, the kayaks and.
Or rooftop.
Yeah.
You can do it with, the, the difference is, is that access, it's like, I can say, well, you can take your car apart and drive it down the street beyond my gate, and then you have access. And that's basically what we're saying here. Take the fender off, take the seats off, go around, put it back together and drive down. That's not how it works. The fact of the matter is, is that based on ancient law in the Commonwealth, citizens have a right to that without structures being in the way. Initially, part of the challenges had been with docks and a number of other things Ralph had pointed out earlier, where people were setting up, you know, basically a gauntlet of stuff for people to work around. That was challenged and it was found to be illegal. In this case, the gates are not correct, okay? Whether they're on this side or that side of the ramp, doesn't matter. The fact is, historical precedent says this is a great pond, people should have access to it. If you want to set regulations on the sides of the boat, that you have a right to. But the fact is, people still have access to that.
Well, it, it just shows you how, why is it, is this, how it gets complicated very quickly.
Isn't that what they've done? They've, they've allowed access, but only under certain terms, such as you can't have a boat with a certain motor on it.
Yes, and you can't go beyond a certain.
You can have a kayak, you can have a trolling motor on it, but you can't drive in and back in a 40 horse Mercury.
Right, and they don't want you going beyond a point where the, where the scouts are doing their.
I'm just asking. I'm not saying they're right or wrong, I'm just asking.
No, no, they have that a comet, okay? As an a comet pond. The difference is that it's posted, okay? And they have, one of the access ramps down at Webster Lake has a horsepower setup where you cannot go beyond a certain limitation. That being said, there is no structure, like a gate, that prevents people from using a trailer. Case in point, I recall meeting up with a gentleman who was a senior, who was just trying to easily ease his boat in with a small engine on it so he could go fishing with the boat. There is no way this gentleman can put that over a gate. And that's the issue here. The fact that people can back down a small boat, put it in and take it back out. Some people have back issues. They can't pick up an entire boat. They can't throw a kayak overhead. That's some of the issues that we're dealing with here. And the horsepower or lack thereof, if you just want to have car top and electric motors and all that, you still should be able to allow trailers because that dates back to the 1800s. And I will send that to you so you can see that. That predates 1934, shows the scouts, 1880 something shows where it was accessed, and it was right on the street. Thanks, Adam.
This is why we spent all those, all those months working on this and resolved.
Chairman, this doesn't mean this needs to be an adversarial process. Obviously, if you have the authority already, you can negotiate with the Boy Scouts to meet everyone's needs, or if need be, you can put an article on to give you the authority to do that. So I wouldn't necessarily want to approach, you to approach this as us versus them, but more as a work together, as we've done so many successful recent initiatives in town.
I can honestly promise you this, Billy, is that's the route we went.
Yeah, that was from the get-go, we talked about being a facilitator.
Yeah, I didn't want to say easier said than done. But sometimes when people are presented with information they did not have before, and if they are told, we have to find a way to make this happen, that suddenly changes their willingness to talk.
Well, the answer to the, the letter, if we end up sending it, may, may dictate how far people now are prepared to go or how much they're prepared to compromise. But thank you.
Definitely worth the shot.
Okay. Citizen input? Al? No? All set? Board member and staff comments?
I can testify that the, the concerts have been very enjoyable. I look, look forward to those, those growing in, in number. I think, I, it has been interesting to see that it was not the same folks every week, so the word is getting out. It's, it's a delightful little corner of Powder Mill. I hope more, more people come out for the last concert to, to discover it. It's really, you know, quite enjoyable.
Mr. Chairman, Bill, let, let Mary Queen of the Rosary know they've been putting him in the bulletin. If you let them know, they'll put it in the church bulletin.
Okay. That's a good idea.
Nice. Mr. Chair, I feel compelled to say every, every meeting, you know, every other meeting once, once in a while to say, you know, there's a lot of good energy going on with several
several committees in this town, you know, building reuse, economic development, we're working with businesses in town, a lot of stuff is going on, a lot of positive energy, so, so folks know that this committee is not sitting still or anything.
For the next meeting, is it possible we can get maybe National Grid and Verizon back out here, discuss the double pole issue? I noticed, once we gave the abbey permission to go ahead with that project, seems like it's had a standstill on double poles.
I think they're coming in next week, it may not be the gentleman, they have a poll hearing on Monday. I can, we're gonna, I can tell them that you're gonna, we're gonna bring it up and just-
The one on Cranberry, that's broken in half, that's tied to another one, that's one of the broken-
So I did, I did have a record, I know they went from a hundred and four down to like eighteen, but they're, they're going, bringing back up.
Yeah.
All right. I like Kevin Shaughnessy, who was the gentleman here before.
I do my, I do my drive Wednesdays and Thursdays, if anyone would like to come with me on double poles and write them down, so.
You should get a job where you're working. Just kidding.
One final just update I would give, it's, our last meeting was, was a very brief meeting, it was, was not televised, it was a, it was a, a special meeting of the board to, to assist the abbey in their, in their open house, which they held a, a couple Saturdays ago, and they needed the approval of the board according to the, the alcohol-
A B C.
A B C C, thank you, Ralph. They were, they were, they were highlighting some, some, some new recipes, and they were selling product on site, which they are authorized to do as a, as a farm brewery, as it's, as it's categorized. The other thing they wanted to do was, was provide free samples, and A B C C said you could do that, but you need the approval of the select board. It's, it, we had not been through that process before, they had not, so we're able to, we were able to get the board together and then to, to make that event possible for them. And Tony, did you make it up there? I saw pictures.
I, I did make it up there. I, I have to say, having gone to, you know, maybe I shouldn't admit this in public enough, breweries, they're, they're, they have one of the most impressive facilities I've ever seen for a microbrewery. It's, it's ten to fifteen thousand square feet of operation space up there, and I've heard that if they use it to full capacity, they'd be in the top, top three brewers in the, in the region. That's how big, big it could be. I mean, they've, and they've started moving towards contract brewing, too, so they're not just sitting still with their own product. Their Wormtown Brewery is having them contract brew a couple of their lines, so.
Interesting.
And, and I'll tell you that they, you know, that we had the few folks walking on the grass that shouldn't have, but they, they managed it well, and it was a real orderly event, and they, they keep that brewery spotless, spotless. It's been operating for over about two years now, it's spotless. So it was, it was, it was very enjoyable, but it was, it was a crowd, it was crowded up till four-thirty, which I think was the, was the close time, they had a line around the building at four-thirty. So it was well-attended, and it's, 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 you, you're in this position, it's proud to go to, you're proud to go to a, an organization that is, that is operating and having some success in your town, so it was, it was real nice.
They were extremely appreciative of our effort to, you know, to, to convene and, and approve that. And I'd say it was, for a lot of people, I think it was just the, the, the privilege of getting inside the monastic enclosure, I mean, it isn't afforded many members of the public, so there was certainly that attraction, and, you know, they looked forward to doing that for, I think, on, on an annual basis at, at least, and-
Mr. Chairman, let me thank you for that, because the abbey has been very generous with the Luther Hill Park over the years, so we appreciate your efforts.
They're, they're great, they're great, you know, members of the community, I mean, they're out there in, in, in many ways, very supportive of, of our efforts in town, and I know they've, they've donated to the, the youth program, so, but-
Decades, decades, the soccer fields.
That's, that's true.
Huge piece of land that they, we had, you, you have hundreds of kids out there on a, on a Saturday playing soccer, so, yeah, they are, they're a very good neighbor.
It's unfortunate the sign doesn't spell abbey correctly. That drives me nuts as an educator, I'm sorry. The abbey soccer field, they leave the E out. And I would think when they're dealing with children, somebody's out there from the, the group that runs that, spell abbey correctly. You're gonna have a generation or more of kids growing up thinking that abbey spelled without an E, because they saw it on their, their soccer field sign.
I promise, Ralph, I am on the email list for the new soccer, I will, I will-
Please.
Say that was pointed out in the meeting and to correct it.
It's been years, it's been at least ten years that sign's been there, it's outrageous.
You go up and just put a little-
You know, they're good enough to let them use the-
Ralph, if somebody-
Good enough to let them use the land, at least spell their name correctly. Imagine somebody, sending somebody a thank-you note for something they gave you, and you spell their name wrong?
Yep.
I mean, that's basically what they're doing, I know it wasn't intentional, but really, somebody by now had to have pointed out to them that that's misspelled, and it should have been corrected, I'm sorry.
I'll send a note to the, the league president, see what kinda-
Fine with me, I don't care. You know, I think, I think it's important that it be spelled correctly, I really do.
I agree.
You know, the other thing, while Tony was talking about cleanliness of, of the, the brewery, I have an occasion every year in December to go up there to the Preserve Factory, if you will, Crappus Preserves. I buy several cases as gifts for family and, and when I was a superintendent for coworkers, and the place is as neat as, it's an older building, it's probably sixty years old, and it's as neat as a pin. As my, as my grandmother would say, you could, you could eat off the floor.
Yep.
It's that clean up there, so they, I want people to know that, too, the place is immaculate, you buy their products, you don't have to worry about any foreign substances being there, or, you know, anything along that line, because they keep everything up there immaculate, it's amazing. And by the way, John, when I was on the board back in the late nineties and the early two thousands, they celebrated their fiftieth anniversary, I think it was two thousand and one, maybe two thousand and two, and they allowed, they allowed certain people from the public to go through the entire abb, the entire abbey, pretty much, and the selectmen were invited, and I went, and, and it's very impressive, very impressive, and whether you're Catholic or not, if you wanna go back in time for about twenty minutes, if you're a history buff, you wanna go back to the medieval time, you wanna go up there any night and be in the chapel at twenty minutes of eight, and you will hear the bell ring, the bells ring, and the monks file in one at a time, and when they are all settled, they sing their prayers, their nightly prayers. It's called comp line. No admission, anybody's free to go, it's a fascinating service to watch, and it really is a step back about maybe five hundred years.
Wow.
So, thank, thank you for giving me this opportunity to, to say that.
Doug telling you to that, being able to go to this, this brewing event, and be able to drive in areas that you're not allowed to drive in, and just, you just realize what a gem that whole-
Oh, yeah.
That whole piece of property is, I mean, it's, it's just, it's beautiful.
It's massive.
It's beautiful. But I must say, Mr. Chairman, you know, we made our phone calls, we made sure we, we took care of business, that special meeting, I have to say, I think, I think we would do that for any business that was, that was in need and wanted to have an event and found themselves in a situation where we may be able to help them in, in, in a way. We don't pay, we don't play favorites, and, and I, I think we would do that for any organization, business who, who needed us to assist them in, in some way.
I'm glad you said that, Tony, because I was gonna mention, that was one of the first things Brendan and I discussed when, you know, when the, when the issue came up, is this is, you know, this is, this is something we're happy to do for the abbey, we know them well, and we know their, their, their commitment to the community, but we are also business, you know, business-friendly board, and anytime we can, we can lend a hand and it makes something possible, especially where, you know, we hadn't been down that road ourselves before, so we all, we all learned on that.
I'd like to add to that, and there's a lot of stories, and, and one that happened the last week with me, is I was notified by a resident in town who also serves on a committee in town, and notified me that a friend of hers was stuck trying to get on a cruise in Florida, and the person did not have, their child, one of the children didn't have a birth certificate with them, with a raised stamp. Asked me to, if I could get ahold of the town clerk. So I was able to get ahold of the town clerk on a Sunday with her cell phone, call her, she met that person at the town hall, created the birth certificate, and was able to email it or, or text it to the people at the, at the cruise, and they accepted it as identification to get that person on.
It's a great story.
So, I mean, there's just, you know, little things like that, that, that make you smile.
Who knows?
We're trying our best on our end to get things done.
Now, with it, with a, with a picture shot and then, and attached to a text, they could see the, they could see the raised-
Yeah, that, and that, and the certification of the town clerk, and, yeah, exactly.
Very good.
Yeah.
That's a great story, and I'm proud to hear things like that.
Yeah.
Any other concluding remarks here at the end? Our next meeting will be on August twenty-second, it will be a workshop meeting, and we'll not be here.
Right, a week from tonight. Poll, poll hearing? I'm trying to think what else is on there. Small agenda.
Oh, we, the poll hearing is on that workshop agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, and the other thing is, if, you know, people should, should tune in, we'll have members of the Parks and Rec Commission to, to talk about the, the state of the parks and their vision for the parks, and, you know, getting Luther Hill back on, back online. A lot of people wonder what's going on, and we wanna make sure we got the, the park commissioners in here. Rob Churchy, the chair, will be here, other members as well, to, to speak up and personally answer questions. Anybody who shows up, and we'll, we'll have an opportunity, as, as workshop meeting is allowed to, to discuss a little, little more comfortably.
Through, through the chair, through the chair, what's the date for Local Fest?
That's, oh, thank you, that's the, that's the Saturday, thank you, Tony.
So I think, I think it's, it's a great opportunity to see some local, locally grown goods in a, in a festive atmosphere behind the Clem's Building. This, the woman who's organizing has worked very hard, and I, I would love to see, you know, big, great participation, a great, great turnout from the town, so. This Saturday, August twenty, twentieth.
August twentieth.
So, Local Fest.
It's nine to four, nine to-
Yeah, it's an all-day.
Yeah, it's all day, in the, in the lot next to Clem's. Thank you, I'm embarrassed, I'm, I'll be there with my metalwork, you know, stop by and say hello, but I really wanted, looking forward to an opportunity to talk with other local artisans and farmers and local producers.
Hopefully the selectmen's team has lowered the price of its keychain this year.
A lot of labor there, Tony, huh?
That's right.
Okay, so at this point, we have a request for an executive session under Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, Paragraph Two, to discuss preparations for contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Need a roll call vote?